I'd like to call the Spotsylvania County School Board meeting of Monday, July 13th, 2015, to order. We have a quorum. Mr. Laura, would you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance? Thank you very much, Mr. Laura. May I have a motion to approve the agenda as presented? Motion by Mrs. Blaylock?
Second.
Second by Dr. Meyer. All those in favor of approving the agenda as stated?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Pass is seven zero. We'll move past 2.01. We have no public hearing. We'll move past item 3.01, no instructional highlights. Moving on to 4.01, Adapted Physical Education Teacher of the Year nominee, Mr. Wolf.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good evening. Good evening, members of the Board, Dr. Baker and Dr. Martin. Kelly Schultz, Riverbend High's Adaptive Physical Education Instructor, was nominated for the Virginia Alliance for Health, Physical Education, Recreation, and Dance: Adapted Physical Education Teacher of the Year. VAPHerd is a professional association of educators that advocate quality programs in health, physical education, recreation, dance, and sport. The association seeks to facilitate the professional growth and development of its members through meaningful membership services, current research, best educational practices, and legislation that will impact the profession. It is the vision of the association to have a positive impact on society as a whole. Ms. Schultz will be going through the application process as the next phase of the process of becoming the 2015 VAPHerd Adaptive Teacher of the Year. Ms. Schultz, please come forward for your recognition.
Mr. Wolf, if you would, finish with 4.02, the state winner for CTE Creating Excellence Award.
Thank you, Mr. Braswell. It is a huge honor that I announce that Chef Lee DiMaggio and his Culinary Arts Program at Spotsylvania Career and Technical Center was named the state winner for the Virginia Department of Education's Career and Technical Education Creating Excellence Awards Program for secondary CTE programs for 2015. Chef, please come forward to be recognized, and congratulations on this achievement. Your dedication to excellence is truly commendable.
(inaudible) everybody, Mr. Wolf, Dr. Baker, members of everybody.[223.98][223.98](laughter) I just like to say that, other than being the greatest culinary arts teacher that ever was, I'd like to say thanks to you, my administration, you know, Mr. Wolf, and you guys, because you have all the smarts in the world sometimes, but if you don't have the stuff to back it up, you're not going to get very well. And I feel very strongly, if you guys want over, and I'll brag about what we have, but I've said many times, that we're probably one of the top five programs in the county in the state. That's because of all of you, so thank you very much.
Okay, we're going to move on to public comments, item 5.01. Dr. Martin.
Madam Chair, we do not have any speakers signed up at the moment, but I will read the instructions in the event that someone would like to come forward.[308.02][308.02](laughter) The public comments segment of our board meetings is a time to receive recommendations, suggestions, concerns, and comments from the general public. Each speaker is allotted five minutes, and we ask that they clearly state their name, address, and/or voting district for the board. A speaker may request additional time from the board should one's five-minute allotment expire. We ask that you keep your comments focused on the issues and that all speakers maintain a level of decorum and mutual respect for one another. Our first speaker is Jean Bergeron?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Hi. My name is Jean Bergeron, and I just wanted to take a moment to introduce myself as the new Spotsylvania Education Association President. I have, I live in the Battlefield District, have for 15 years now. Both of my girls have graduated from Chancellor High School. And I love this county. My hair is deceptive. I've only been teaching full-time for five years, just completed my fifth year at Riverbend High School. I'm a special education teacher. But I did do 10 years as a substitute, and I also did the Algebra Readiness Program. Again, like I said, I love this county. I think we have such a dynamic group of teachers here, administrators, board. I really look forward to working with my fellow teachers, with Dr. Baker and his staff, and with you, the school board, to get our students where we want them to be, and that is ready for what's beyond. I also want to make sure that we keep them first. They need to be kept first in our minds. So beyond that, I just look forward to working with you. Thank you very much.
I don't know if I'm going to be stoned, because I live three miles outside of your district, but I'm part of the Spotsylvania NAACP and Virginia organizing, and we have been working on programs concerning the school to prison pipeline, and I would like to address that just briefly, more as a person. I'm from Montgomery County, Maryland, and I'd like somebody to read the student code of conduct from that county, just because it is so coherent and easy to understand for everyone, and there's a matrix that talks about the tiers of discipline. And in Maryland, they have a requirement that no student is going to be suspended because of misbehavior in the classroom. So they have tiered levels of support that are very clear in their document, especially about restorative justice within the classroom and outside of the classroom, that I think is very helpful. Let me just read one thing that I really appreciated in their honesty. "Our work is informed by a growing body of educational research that says suspending or expelling students except as a last resort has little or no positive impact on improving student behavior or school safety. We know that when students lose valuable instructional time, it makes it even more difficult for them to be successful." Already, our targeted efforts to reduce suspensions have been working. However, discretionary suspensions dropped by more than 35% over the last school year, but significant challenges remain. Like the vast majority of school districts, Montgomery County Public Schools continue to grapple with the issue of disproportionate discipline. For example, more than half of the students suspended are African-Americans, although they only represent 20% of the student population. In contrast, less than 15% of students suspended are white, yet they represent 32% of the student population. This is not acceptable. I mean, I thought that was really an honest statement on their behalf. And we have a free restorative justice seminar on July 22nd, if anyone would like to go, at St. George's Episcopal Church in Fredericksburg. Folks from Fairfax County that are doing restorative justice in the schools are going to be there to instruct us. So I have a brochure for that. I have a copy of Montgomery County's Code of Conduct, if anyone would like to look at Thank you for the invasion.
Madam Chair, that's all of the speakers that signed up.
Thank you, Dr. Martin. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to speak this evening? Seeing none, I'm going to close public comments, move on to 5.02, Board Member Comments. And this evening, I will start with Mr. Laura.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm going to pass, but I will have a board committee report later on.
Thank you. Dr. Meyer?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'll pass as well.
Mrs. Blaylock?
Just very brief, I want to welcome Ms. Bergeron. Thank you for coming and introducing yourself, and welcome. We look forward to working with you as well. And Ms. Smith, who just spoke, I share your passion, so thank you for coming and sharing the information with us. I'm definitely interested in the July 21st meeting. Thank you so much. Twenty-second. Oh, I wrote 21st. Thank you, thank you. And congratulations to everyone. I think Chef's already gone, but he is just fabulous, so thank him, and just so proud of him, as usual. Thank you.
Mr. Braswell?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just have one announcement. My announcement is that on the 26th of September at Cortland High School, we will celebrate the 10th Annual Race Against Teen Violence, and is a very monumental event for not only us as a family, but for us as a school family. We're looking for a banner year in terms of runners, and we promise to have not only a thrilling time in terms of all the activities that are available for young people to take advantage of, but we also intend to get the message out that teen violence and the act of that not only does harm to the victims of the crime, but also to the perpetrators as well. So with that being said, please mark your calendar, 26th of September at Cortland High School, the 10th Annual Race Against Teen Violence. Thank you.
Mr. Blaine?
My comments really are not for the audience here, but the audience at home, to tell you the truth. This is the summertime, kids are out of school, but learning is still taking place, or not taking place, and I want to encourage you folks that have preschool children, and primary children especially, to read to those kids at home, to make sure you make, every week this summer, make it a point to go to the library and get some books, and read to those children, and explore some of the things in the library. We work with the raw material that you send to us from your home, and our teachers can only do so much with that raw material, and the better prepared your children are in September, just a couple of months away, the better that child will learn. So please take time to do that, and have lots of good conversations with the children to help build their vocabulary. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Grant.
Pass.
Thank you, and I'm just going to echo Mrs. Blaylock's comments. Ms. Bergeron, thank you very much for being here and introducing yourself, and Ms. Smith, thank you for being here and making your comments as well. We have some of our newer staff members here, and welcome to Spotsylvania County. So with that, I'm going to close Board Member Comments and move on to 5.03, Superintendent's Report. Dr. Baker?
I don't have a report. I do want to acknowledge that a couple of weeks ago, we had a division-wide leadership learning exchange that occurred at Riverbend High School, and I just again want to acknowledge the efforts of our staff, and there were a number of outside speakers and participants, including student presenters this year. And what I've been able to see over the last three years is, as a culture, our school division embraces job-embedded, ongoing learning, and knowing that many folks off-contract come in to spend two days in pretty intense learning sessions, and spend a lot of time networking and collaborating, even at this time of the summer, to already be focused on how we can continue to improve what we do for our students and the services we deliver to our community. I was very inspired and impressed by that over those two days, and so I want to thank Dr. Strike, who was, kind of coordinated that event, but there were so many individuals, Ms. Flannard and her entire instruction team, and so many people that participated and contributed, and I'd like to thank them again for that. Outstanding job.
Thank you, Dr. Baker. It really was a wonderful workshop. Moving on to Special Reports, 6.01, Board Member Committee Reports. Mr. Laura, you said you had something.
Madam Chair, I'm happy to report to you that on Monday, June 29th, the Spotsylvania Education Foundation held their 9th Annual Golf Tournament at Font Lake, and it was successful. A lot of money was raised, and the, there's something that happened there that I'll need to share with you and the board. This being the 9th year, and I have been to each, because I've been a big supporter, I truly love the work of the foundation. So this being my last year, not only in the board, but in the city, in the community, I decided that instead of just volunteering and helping out, this year I would do that, but I would also play and contribute money. So a few months ago, I emailed the foundation, and I said that this year I would play with the Spotsylvania High School foursome, and that was the plan, and in fact, five days before that tournament, we played, the high school team, we played at the football team annual tournament, and had a great time. So the following day, on Thursday, I emailed the foundation again, and I said, "I'll be there Monday, I'll arrive at 8 o'clock, and I'll bring my money with me." So I showed up, sure enough, about 7:30, quarter eight, and I went to the registrar's office, and I said, "Is the Spotsy team here?" I said, "No, Spotsy's not playing today." I said, "How about Cortland?" "Cortland doesn't have a team." I said, "How about the administration team?" I said, "They don't have one." I said, "Well, I'll be happy to play by myself." I mean, I play at Meadow Farm, I play three times a week or so, and most of the time, I enjoy playing by my, sometimes it's just as fun to play by yourself than with a group. So I said, "I'd be happy to play by myself." And they said, "Well, you're not registered." I said, "Well, Thursday, I emailed the foundation," and I said, "Yeah." And the lady said, "I saw the email, but you're not registered." So I said, "Okay," you know, and I walked out. At Meadow Farm, I don't have to pay, because I'm, you know, so I put my $200 away, and I went to Meadow Farm, and I got to the first tee, and a couple of guys go, "Hey, can we play with you?" I said, "Sure." So we went on to play eighteen hole, had a good time. But afterward, I begin to think, I said, "Wait a minute. For weeks, they've been asking these ladies to go out there and get $25 tickets and what have you, and here, I've been a member of the foundation all these years, I've got money with me, this is a fundraising for children, why didn't they let me play?" I was, you know, and then I found out that two teams only had three people, and they could have put me in there. And honestly, I don't know the answer, and it's not really important. I had a great day, a great time that day, but it seems to be that, well, I'm asking you two things. First of all, I want you to appoint someone to serve in the foundation, because I don't have the heart to do it anymore. And number two, ask the president of the foundation, "Why wasn't this man allowed to play?" And you see, I'm sorry, but I go back a long way in Virginia, and I can remember the days when we don't serve your kind here, you know, and I hope that's not the case, but it didn't, you know, it sort of bothers you when you walk into a place where you've done everything you can to register, and then they don't want your money, and so I'll leave it at that, but I'll ask you to check with them and see why was I not allowed to, not that it matters, I had a good time that day with my folks at Meadows, but we shouldn't be doing that kind of stuff. It's probably illegal nowadays, you know, when you have a 501(c), and then you deny someone that went through the steps, and then they don't want to take his money, so thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Laura. I know I had wanted to do it in the past, but if there's anybody else on the board that wanted to do work on the foundation membership, because we, it's just, do you want to do it, Ms. Blaylock?
I'll do it.
Okay. Well, we're going to add, take out Mr. Laura's name and add Mrs. Blaylock's name to the... No, no, it's just the appointments, so. Okay. So we'll change the list of our committees, so that's just a committee change. Thank you. Any other special committee reports? No? Okay. Then moving on to 7.01, oh, sorry, this, item 7.01, Approval of Minutes, and 7.02, The Approval of Donations for Our Consent Agenda. Dr. Martin?
On the consent agenda this evening, of the minutes of the June 22nd, 2015 regular meeting, and donations which are usual and customary, staff asks that the consent agenda be approved as presented.
Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
So moved.
Mr. Blaine, and I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Braswell. All those in favor of the consent agenda items as presented, say aye, please?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Seven zero. Thank you. Okay, moving on to action items, 8.01, The Approval of Purchase of a Pickup Truck and Utility Service Body. Ms. Finley and Mr. Greenlaw?
Good evening, Ms. Shelley, board members, Dr. Baker, Dr. Martin. This evening, I will be presenting with you, along with Mr. Craig Greenlaw, Director of Fleet Services. We are looking to purchase one pickup truck with a utility service body, and currently Fleet Services has four Road Service Response trucks. The average age of these trucks is 18 years. Unit FS-010 is a 1992 model with 207,060 miles. A replacement truck is requested to maintain response reliability, as well as safe and efficient operation. A newer model truck would also be more cost-effective to operate. The replacement truck is deemed essential to maintain our safe and reliable service to our customers, and staff is requesting the purchase of one Chevrolet 3500 pickup truck with utility service body. The newer, better-equipped unit will allow staff to operate more efficiently while maintaining our reliable responses for our customers. Currently, a truck meeting the specifications is offered under a Virginia State contract. Our recommendation is that the school board approve the purchase of one pickup truck with utility body from our FY 2016 Fleet Service Funds. The total cost will be $38,225. Once again, I'd like to thank you for allowing me to present this item, and Mr. Greenlaw and I would be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. I have a motion to approve. Was that you? Is that why you had hand up?
I just have a question.
Oh, okay. Mr. Laura, and a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Mrs. Blaylock, a second. Ms. Grant?
Is the old truck diesel or gas?
It's diesel.
So is the new truck diesel?
No, ma'am.
Okay.
I'm just curious. I thought...[1435.74][1435.74](laughter)
It's a good price.
Any more comments? More questions? Okay. All those in favor of the approval of the purchase of one pickup truck, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Pass is seven zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to item 8.02, The Second Reading of School Board Policy JFC Code of Conduct. Mr. Wolf and Mr. Lynn?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Again, good evening. Good evening, members of the board, Dr. Baker and Dr. Martin. Each year, Spotsylvania County School Board Policy JFC Code of Student Conduct undergoes a review to ensure compliance with changes in legislation. Additionally, a committee composed of school leaders, teachers, division leaders, as well as parents, and student representatives reviewed proposed changes with support from Mr. John Lynn, Supervisor of School Safety and Disciplinary Hearing Review Officer. On June 22nd, 2015, the school board heard a presentation regarding the process of review by the committee, along with their recommended changes. All changes have been reviewed and approved by legal counsel. A summary of the proposed revisions were attached, as well as each of the policies and regulations with the proposed changes highlighted in red. It is the administration's recommendation that the school board approves the second reading of Policy JFC as presented.
May I have a motion to approve?
I will move the recommended action.
Mr. Blaine, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Laura. Do we have any discussion?
Yeah.
Ms. Blaylock?
Hi, good evening.
Yes.
I have a few questions, and some of these you might find kind of the smaller, more insignificant parts of this, but the reason I want to clarify I'm asking is because as a school board member, I hear from the public, and I get a lot more feedback than you could ever imagine on cell phone code, dress code, and things like that. So as I was reading it, I want to make sure that I clarify some things. So looking through it, I just jotted, I've read over every sheet of this, and I jotted down a few questions, so I don't know if you all have it in front of you to where we could go.
We do have the...
Okay, good. This page is not numbered, but it's under P like Paul, under expulsion, there's a red letter change.
Going to our red line version.
Okay, thank you. Oh, okay. Yeah, I only have the red line version in front of me.
You said it's under P?
P as in Paul, yeah.
That's JFC you're looking at?
Yes, sir.
Yep.
It's under expulsion. Are you all there?
Under expulsion. Sorry for the delay, since we're not...
That's all right. That's all right.
Okay? Yes.
The red letter change where it says, "Any case involving a serious violation of the code." I'm completely fine with this whole thing. It's just where it says, "Involving serious violations," is, can we put a list of what the serious violations are in our code, just so it's not open for interpretation? Which I think we all know what the serious ones are. I'm just saying, if maybe we could list them, so...
Okay.
And I don't need them listed now, just, you know what I mean?
Sure, just a recommendation.
Yeah, and that was, that's all I had on that one. Then, and then if you go to the next page, and if anybody doesn't want that, please tell me, I just think we should clarify that. Another clarification question I had was on the next page, under definition of possession, where it says, "Possession as it relates to drugs, weapon, or other items prohibited by the policy or school rules is defined as one's person within personal item owned or possessed by a student, such as a purse or backpack, etc." Would you elaborate, is that saying that you would have to have some report, that there's belief that this child has something in their purse before you would go through a child's purse, or just kind of elaborate on and clarify that sentence for me, if you could?
Yes, ma'am. Anytime before a search is begun by a school official, the school official must have reasonable suspicion that the child has...
What's some examples of that reasonable suspicion?
It could be that they've received a report either from another adult in the building, or even from a student or students, that a student has been seen with something illegal, or it's been reported, or sometimes parents will call in, and then that might precipitate the search.
Okay. But you could never just search a girl's purse or a backpack of a student just because, right? And that clarifies that, and that...
Yes, ma'am.
That's what that's saying?
The only exception would be if we asked permission of the student, and they gave consent to search, but otherwise, if there was reasonable suspicion, the school official could...
But we don't ever just go ask a kid permission to go through their purse or backpack, would we, for no reason?
No, ma'am.
That's not...
Yeah, yeah, I didn't think so. All right. And then the next page, if we go down to number five, where it says attendance...
Let me go back to you.
In my previous year, and it talks about tardy and tardy to school, and it tells under it some of the things that could happen, and it talks about suspension from extracurricular activities or in-school suspension. In the previous years, I had several complaints. In the previous years, I had several complaints I had to deal with where we cracked down really hard, and one tardy had gotten us in-school detention or suspension or something. Is that tiered out to where you don't get suspended until you've become a problem with tardy? Or can you get, is it, does that read to where you could suspend a child for being tardy one time? When I read it, I couldn't really clarify that.
I would hope that the schools would tier it out.
Yeah, that's a little rough.
Yes, to go straight, if you have somebody who's tardy to a class, typically it's not an in-school suspension.
Well, you did it, we've done it before.
Yes, well, the principal discretion that happens to exist there, not sure on a case-by-case basis, ma'am, is really what you'd have to look at.
So that really does leave it open to you could do that if you wanted to?
You could.
Yeah.
Yes.
I wish the wording on that was changed, but you're right. I would hope we would tier it, tier it out a little bit, but I won't ask you to change this, a lot of stuff. Then, and two, that I really get the most calls about, and I can't tell you, I don't even know if I could tell you how many calls I get about it, is the dress, number 12, dress and appearance. It's, I read it all, great. The last sentence where it said "schools administrators have the authority to make the rules regarding appropriate school attire as well as wearing of hoods, hats, coats, flip-flops, carrying of backpacks, book bags within the building", okay, the flip-flop thing has to be addressed. I have heard from school A, can't wear them at all. School B can wear flip-flops. Why can't I wear flip-flops? I am not here to say which one I think. I honestly don't have any strong opinions towards that, but again, you read this, we could have one high school allowing flip-flops and one not allowing flip-flops, one allowing book bags throughout the school, one not allowing it, one allowing hats, one not allowing it, is how that reads, correct? Could we make that more uniform, just so simple? And about the backpacks, I've had several complaints on this. I don't know if y'all have seen our lockers? A backpack can't fit in there. You have to walk around with that backpack. Yeah, I think it's this wide. My first grader's backpack wouldn't fit in a high school locker. Now, their books might stack up straight, but they're, you can't get a backpack in our lockers. So I think that would be very hard on a high school student, especially with their kind of books, to not be able to have their backpack, and so to open that up, I'm gonna end up with more calls. Do you think there's a way we could talk about, and maybe y'all even let the principals decide what they want to do? Again, I don't have an opinion on it, but maybe if one, if we're all gonna do flip-flops, we all do them. If we're not gonna do them, we don't do them. If we're all gonna carry backpacks, we all carry them.
Well, I believe in some consistency across the board, as much as you do, which is sort of the underlying theme, if I'm hearing you correctly.
Yes, yes, yes.
In regards to backpacks, some of the lockers, our older schools have thinner lockers, and some even smaller lockers. So, some don't allow backpacks, but they'll allow sling bags, the sling packs to go around. And if the lock, if the book bag doesn't fit in the locker, consistency's the key. I'm only throwing out just the examples. In some cases, the backpacks are so full that they don't fit in the locker, but in the classroom, they impede walking around in the classroom as well. So, it is a $64,000 question, but I also believe that you can get some consistency in just working with the various schools across the board. But most have the, I don't want to say policies, but their local sort of school practices that they employ based off of the facilities that they have that can accommodate either a larger backpack or not, and in some cases, the sling bag.
Yeah, and you're right, some schools can, some can't, so I was just thinking maybe the middle and high school principals decided, and just made it a uniform across the board.
Well, I would agree, and having been at a principal of two of those middle schools, one school, lockers larger, went to another school and figured it must have been built as an elementary. So, and not secondary, because we've seen some sixth through eighth graders that will come in, you know, ready to play football as a senior. So, but we can certainly carry on the conversations with the principals more than happy to do that sort of streamline.
We get a lot of call, I get a lot of calls on this, and it's only middle and high. I don't think I've ever heard from an elementary student on flip-flops or anything.
Well, they're excited to get a locker.
They're just, yeah, I don't even, yeah, so it's, like I say, some things seem small, but there's a lot of discussion in the community about little things like this. If we could just sort of make it uniform, everyone in our community knows what's acceptable, what's not. Again, I don't have an opinion. I want the, I'd rather our principals decide. They know, they run their buildings. I don't, but... And then the cellphone, it's 15. I'm just gonna read this first sentence. I'm not gonna start, stop reading until it gets to the period, and I just want to point out, I think the sentence might need to be changed. Using or having a cellular telephone or similar communications device or tablet or similar communication device which has been turned on while riding a school bus to or from school or upon entering school property for the purpose of attending school until departing school grounds following the end of a regular school day. That sentence is extremely convoluted and long. That, I think what that's saying to me is, don't pull out any of your devices once you hit your school bus until the end of the day. And it goes on to say later, "if a principal authorizes the activation of these devices, he or she has the authority to make rules restricting these devices to classwork or school-related items." I don't know how many of y'all have a high schooler, but this is not feasible. I can walk into any of our high schools today and look over and see a kid looking at their phone, and I will guarantee you, we're not doing classwork. That is not feasible. You can't tell them not to put them on when they get on their bus till they get off, because that's just not gonna happen. But it opens it up to where kids could really get in trouble, so you have some kids that might get caught and some kids not, but half, all the kids are doing it. You go in a classroom, you see them hooked into the wall. Some kid might get sent to the office for that, another kid might not. It's not fair. Either we're gonna use cell phones or we're not, and I totally agree, they shouldn't be in classrooms. They're there to learn, but I'm, on the bus, I think every kid has them out that's in middle and high.
Actually, we have four schools that did a bring-your-own-device this past year as a pilot, and with cell phones in the classroom and the appropriate use of that. And also, as a Commonwealth Governor's School that I'm very well aware of, has taken them, and they put them out on the desk to use them as a resource inside of the school building. So it's, it's being able to work with our teachers to understand that the devices that the students bring to school do have an educational benefit at the same time.
Yeah, I'm not talking about that part of it. I'm talking about the part where it says, when the principal doesn't say you can use them, in the hallways and stuff. I mean, you have to know that every high schooler has one, and every high schooler is constantly looking at them through the day. I have a high schooler, well, this one's not a good example. He just got a cellphone at seventeen, but my other ones, I, yeah, I have one that graduated in 2007 that called me from class. It was not okay. So I think that that, that policy is just a blatant, you can't do it, but we know they're all doing it. I think if there is a way to balance that out a little bit, I mean, cell phones are just, I don't know how we're gonna just put all those away all of a sudden. So what you're basically saying is all the high schoolers are violating code of conduct every day, because their, cell phones are out. You have to agree with that. There's nobody...
I would hope they're not, but I can't say that they're not. Because having a high school daughter, well, once having a high school daughter, I completely understand.
Well, if you look at our discipline report, you see quite a bit of some of it starting between texting and people getting upset during the day. It breaks in between classes. I'll meet you in the bathroom and do all that, so I think we pretty much know cell phones are out. So my point is, number 15, I don't think is actually a reality anymore. And I don't know what it should be. Again, this is a principal conversation, not me, but it's just, it's just an area that I don't...
I don't mind speaking to the principals as...
We just need to come up with, again, across-the-board rule. If we're gonna have cell phones out, let's have them out. If we're not, we're not. I just think it needs to be one way or the other.
It's certainly something that I can speak to.
Yeah, so that, number 15. Now, the last questions I had was about, I looked at the committee members, which was a great committee. It was forty, forty-one people. There was one parent and one student. I think it would be good if we had some more, just, and I'm not saying take away the other ones, but add some more community members to that, just because I think that it might have addressed some of the things I brought up, because I'm bringing things that, everything I've talked about is I've gotten a call on it sometime. Cell phones is a real big one. And the, for some reason, flip-flops are too. So that was a suggestion I had, and then the last thing I want to ask you about is, is when I read the Code of Conduct, because I get a little frustrated, I think I said this last year, and I get a little frustrated sometimes, because I can't tell sometimes if we're zero tolerance or not, because it says, "this is gonna happen if you do this", but yet we always have the ability to change that if we want to, and sometimes, you know, I get asked a lot about my feelings on zero tolerance. And I would ask y'all, are we a zero-tolerance school, or is in every single case, is there room to bend? Or would you consider us zero tolerance?
We have room to bend. Zero tolerance was removed from our Code of Conduct two years ago.
I think that's a misconception, exactly. That's a misconception. I believe people think we live in a division that is zero tolerance, but that's really not the case.
No. Again, you can go by case-by-case basis.
Right.
In some things that you are required to go ahead and you look at the infraction that the student did. If you bring a weapon to school, that's...
Yeah, the serious stuff is a...
Yeah, serious stuff, so those are non-negotiables. So, but in those other cases...
I don't get calls about those. Those are cut and dry.
But in those other cases, that's why there's a range of consequences that have been listed in the Code of Student Conduct for principals and administrators to employ.
So, let me give an example, and you just tell me, is there, would there be a place to differentiate? If you had a boy who goes fishing every weekend, accidentally leaves his tackle box that has a knife to skin a fish, and his, and somebody, and the security person walks by and looks at it, would he get the same punishment as someone who was in a classroom who brought a weapon that was there for, we know from either other kids talking or some things coming out of a child's mouth, that he was there for the wrong reason? And maybe an aggressive person that could really hurt another child? Is there a way for us to differentiate and treat those two boys differently?
Yes, ma'am, there is. There's language in the Code of Conduct that allows the superintendent the discretion to determine if, what is the appropriate punishment.
Okay, that's good.
And of course, by law, there are certain, certain school violations that the law says students will be expelled, but the law goes on to provide additional language that allows the superintendent the discretion to determine if some other consequence other than expulsion is appropriate. And, and the superintendent reaches that decision by considering all aspects of the case, and that would be a good example of, the two things might not exactly be resulting in the same consequences.
That was helpful. That was good, and I'm glad to hear that, and you pointed out too, a lot of it is the law. A lot of it is Virginia code, and that's, you know, we cite that in the Code of Conduct when that's the case, and that's a cut and dry thing. But like I say, a lot of this was, seemed small, but while we're going through it and we're going line by line, it's a good time to bring it all up, and I'm not saying we could all get it changed, but I would like to see some of it. I would definitely like to see the wording of the cell phones clarified a little bit more, and the dress code clarified a little bit more, so when they walk into a high school or a middle school, like I say, elementaries didn't really affect them. They know if they can carry their backpack. They know if they can carry, wear flip-flops or hoods, or their hoodies, whatever. It doesn't matter to me, but I would like to see a decision be made and just stick with it. And across the board of our middle and high schools would be nice.
Mr. Blaine.
I would like to comment. I certainly agree in the area that Mrs. Blaylock has just been speaking about cell phones, but I'm putting myself in the role of a teacher for just a minute, and we're in school and kids are in classes to learn. And if the cellphone is a pain, it's going off, it's the wrong place. And there is a statement in there that says the teacher, I think, can pick it up if they want to. But I think it makes sense to be uniform, and I'm in agreement to some extent with that. But at the same time, I think each school is a separate location, and I think the, that faculty at that school should have a lot of say in the kind of rules and regulations that they want to use in that school. So I see room for variation. So that just, I just throw that in for consideration. The other question though is, just help me understand, if I enroll a child in school, now when do I get as a parent that Code of Conduct? And how is it introduced to them? Is it the same at the high school level as middle school, or... What are the mechanics of that, in other words?
Thank you. The, when a student enrolls, at the, at the beginning of the school year, every school has a Code of Conduct presentation, except at the elementary level where they'll go around class by class to go ahead and discuss them. So, if you are a new student who's coming into our division and we're not privy to that large meeting inside typically the auditorium or so, is that a Code of Conduct will be assigned or given to you along with other educational materials as you enroll that student.
And then I have to sign it or something saying I have it, or I have...
Yes, you have to, there are signature pages on the back stating that you have read the Code of Conduct, and the parent signs that and the student signs that.
Okay, and probably when they read it is when they, they have a need to read it to find out what the rule was, I suppose.
We would hope they read it beforehand.
Yeah, you hope so.
Before you sign.
I'd like to just make a suggestion, because as I read that, as did Amanda, there's a lot of legalese in there, and things are written the way they have to be. I'm not even debating that. But I wonder whether it might but be good to have a paragraph at the beginning of that booklet that's written in layman's language, that's very simple, and it says, "look, these are the general provisions", you have the, item A, general provisions, number six, responsibility of parents. That's in the code already. And it's well-written, but I'm looking and like to suggest that maybe we could have something upfront, kind of conversational. You know, you're a parent, we see this as your responsibility. Your child's here, we're here with them all day long. They've gotta be responsible. This is the role that we see you playing, Mr. and Mrs. Parent. Just to, you know, a conversational, layman's language that might encourage them to read it, at least the beginning, at the beginning, to get a sense of what's in the, in the code itself. It's just a suggestion, but I find it, you have to pay attention to what you're reading if you're gonna understand it because of the vocabulary, and I think your illustration was well-taken, so, just a comment.
Thank you.
May I just respond real quick to, I think, a running theme that we've heard tonight, both in the board member comments and earlier, I think, and I'll try to clarify this. Obviously, the purpose of the Code of Conduct is not, for lack of a better phrase, for people to have to crack the code. You know, it's, it's not meant to be confusing, and I think some of the recommended changes in format this year are, again, to try to clarify what is a fairly robust set of guidelines with the primary purpose of ensuring or supporting student learning and student safety. And, but I think some really good productive comments that have come from this discussion that we can take to heart is that there is a continued need, and I know that both Mr. Wolf with principals and Mr. Lynn in terms of small groups are continuously delving into the consistency of enforcement of the Code of Conduct, or the execution. And one thought might be that, and it may not be just, you don't need maybe more in the Code of Conduct, but I like the idea of continuing to develop supplemental types of supports, maybe to crack the code, or to try to, you know, frequently ask questions. And so I think something could be, here are some things that come up frequently that we want to try to help parents and students understand, and why there may be flexibility, why there may be some different implementation in one building because of a, an instructional initiative, all of those sorts of things, and so I, I would recommend for our staff to take that as maybe, and I know there's a group even meeting tomorrow regarding the Code of Conduct, is to look at how can we supplement this for not only more consistent execution, but for better understanding and clarity for our parents and students, so.
Madam Chair, Mr. Wolf, when I looked at what was written in red under item 15, I interpreted that as possibly addressing those schools that have, that are experimenting with or they're working with bring-your-own-device. And I may have misinterpreted incorrectly, but that was my interpretation. So I think what Mrs. Blaylock is pointing, I'm gonna piggyback on what Dr. Baker has said, because we're up for second reading approval on this, but we do want, we don't want to hold up what you, what you need to have in place to work with the, with the principals and your staff and printing and all that. But having a Q and A kind of a sheet that accompanies, that establishes a consistency in the application, I think is very, very important. So that you may want to continue to elaborate on how this is implemented for those schools that bring your own device versus those that do not, and in what areas it is absolutely not permitted to have that device on. Across all thirty-some schools, you know, there are areas where those devices should not be on. But in those schools where you bring your own device and as an instructional tool is used in the classroom, that's definitely where we want to have it. And eventually, we may have many more schools, and we may get to the extent where all of our middle and high schools, provided we have, quote, sufficient bandwidth, you know, that we can both accommodate the needs of the students as well as improve our instructional, instructional effort. So, I, I am fully in favor of, one, approving for second reading, but two, proceeding along the lines that we have consistency, whether it's flip-flops or backpacks, or bring your own, your use of their devices, tablets or phones, you know, that we have that consistency, so that parents know what to expect. With it. Thank you, Madam Chair.
If I may, I'm hearing a lot of different things, but trying to tie it all together. If, if... If, if in continued discussion with our administrators on, on looking at consistency across the board, because there are some who have not employed a "bring your own device" or, or flip flops versus non-flip flops, or backpacks versus non-backpacks, and so on and so forth, what I would respectfully ask is that if we do approve this tonight, that I pledge to you that we will work with our principals at that point to go ahead and come together and look at some supplemental type materials that we might be able to distribute to the public and put together with Mr. Lynn and our principals and carry on that dialogue, and, and look for some recommended edits that, that we have within our code that have been brought up tonight, and then make the, make those changes, and then go from there, unless there's other, other things that you would like to bring up.
No, I thank you, Mr. Wolf, for that clarification, and I think, correct. I think we're all saying the same.
I'm fine with it, I just, I'm just on it for the future.
Okay, so we're fine, well, you're about to vote, but...
Well, I'm planning on endorsing this this evening, because we have to move on, and this is a good document that gives us guidelines, I'm not saying it's not a good document.
So for future edits?
I'm just talking about when we were looking at, every year we do this.
Sure.
So I'm thinking by next year, because the cellphone thing is just getting bigger and bigger, I, they have got to get out of classrooms, I totally agree, unless they're using them. I'm, there was just some things as we're talking about it, if I say it now, you know, just things to look at, and I know they sound small, but this is what community members talk about, especially if you know somebody goes to a different high school, and they do something different, and, you know, so it, that, no, I'm totally endorsing this, because we need a document in place right now, because we're about to have a lot of kids walk through our doors, and we want to make sure that we are settled. And Mr. Blaine is telling you, the Code of Conduct, I know as a parent, because I still have kids everywhere in this school, is you get it the day you walk in, and we don't even get a locker number until we've read it and signed it. So they're pretty good about holding us accountable as parents, I, I think anyway, because, and my child has to come sign it too, not just myself, so, and we do go over it, so I hope that that's the case, I think it is, I get the feeling from the community, and our, our schools will not let us have our locker numbers, nothing, until we have gotten that turned back in, so I think that's a good thing, that's always worked.
Ms. Grant.
I just wanted to point out, on a comment that Mr. Blaine had made when he said that, you know, different schools could have different rules within their administration, I think at the high school level, we can't afford to do that, whereas shipping, transporting children from multiple schools a day, they're going to governor's school from their home school, they're going to vocational center from their home school, we hope in the future to be sending them to other locations for other specialties, and if they can't leave one high school and go another high school and have a totally different set of rules, you can't change your shoes on the bus, because oops, this school doesn't let, it's got flip flops, and we can't, gotta turn my phone off on here, and oops, I forgot, I mean, we, we have to be consistent if we're gonna be at that level, I mean, you can't, we walk into a building and have a, have to take your hat off, or change your hoodie, I mean, they have to be the same if we're gonna ship them from school to school.
Good point. Mr. Laura.
After the comments I made two weeks ago, I, I promised myself that I would not say anything at this meeting, well, I'm gonna have to break my promise, but I'll try to be brief. First of all, I want to acknowledge something that I have felt for a long time. Mrs. Blalack, you have the heart of gold, and, and every once in a while, you say things that, that makes me, you know, bring tears to my eyes, and today was one of those days. You, you have a good heart, and you, you've been a good school board member, you're gonna remain to be a good school board member, because you, you are guided by your heart, and you have a good heart, and I thank you for that. Now, Mr. Wolf, Mr. Lynn, and, and Dr. Baker, this is kind of redundant, because I think I said something along these lines, my heart goes out to all of you educators, you have to deal with this document that gets bigger and bigger every year, and is written by lawyers, even an esteemed scholar like Dr. Myers has to interpret what, what is it meant by, some of these things come right out of the Virginia Legislature. Teenagers are not going to read through this stuff, teenagers are not going to memorize it, teenagers by nature act on impulse, and it is what it is. Now, I'm glad that I'm along with teenagers, but then I'm reminded that I've got seven grandchildren, and they're gonna have to face this set of rules, and God help those kids that have, you know, intellectual disability or what have you, they can't interpret all this, so the whole thing is left up to consistency, discretion, and interpretation. That's a hard way to go, so I feel sorry for the kids, and I feel sorry for all of you that have to interpret these rules, but we're in, this is, this Code of Conduct is a tough line, and it only gets more difficult every year. Last comment, I'm old enough to remember when the Virginia Code of Criminal Justice consisted of a small pamphlet, now we have at least seven volumes, so the Code of Criminal Justice, so, that's the world that we live in, and it makes it hard for everyone involved, so, but I will vote on this, but I'll, I'll, I'll vote on it with a heavy heart, because it's heavy on everyone involved.
Thank you.
One quick. I had, had all my questions last week, so I don't have to worry, our last meeting, so I'm not worried about that, but, but based on, on the cellphone thing, I, I mean, and maybe possibly a "bring your own device" type of policy, where it was a separate policy with "bring your own device," would, would maybe alleviate some of the questions that, some of that we have about the cellphone usage.
I believe we have something, a, a more elaborate version of the intent of that program that we can provide the board and that we can continue to reinforce, this is just sort of a, a way of representing that within the code, not to make it even longer, as I'm hearing, than it already is. One thing that I, I know that our staff does, and I'm going to continue to encourage them to do, and I think that this might even be a good thing to report back to not only me, but to the school board, is as we, over the summer, really look at our, our discipline data from the past year, and we look at trends over the last three to five, as we try to determine the positive or negative impact, and I know there's some debate in other school divisions regarding "bring your own device," that it's not worth it, too many students are getting in trouble, I would be curious as to whether incidents involving the use or possession of technology have increased since we began to allow flexibility for "bring your own device," whether they are the same, or whether they have been reduced, because I think that will be a good conversation regarding kind of next steps in terms of how to articulate it, and whether it expands to other schools as well.
Sure, sure.
Madam Chair, I'd just like to, I'd like to close on a comment that, I want to thank the committee, and you're, and everyone involved for the reformatting, you know, into the thirty-eight items, you know, so that it's, and it's in alphabetic order, which makes a lot easier to look up and to follow, rather than have to look through the Code of Student Conduct, it's in section A, no, it's in section B, you know, and it's all mixed up. I think this format should facilitate, one, it, it certainly makes it possible to get a bird's eye view of one particular item, just like Mrs. Blalack honed in on several items, when it was really easy to go to those items, so I think this reformatting facilitates and, and makes, forces us to focus in on how it's presented, how are we saying it, are we really communicating, are we leaving, creating more gaps, or where we need to emphasize with understandings, you know, supplemental kind of information, so I want to thank the committee, and I know the board members are nodding their heads in agreement, but, you know, we definitely do appreciate all the work that went into this, this was not something that was created overnight, so, so with that, thank you for a job well done.
Thank you.
All those in favor of second approval, second reading approval of School Board Policy JFC, Code of Conduct, say aye please.
Aye.
All those opposed, seven zero, thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, okay. On to item eight point zero three, second reading approval of revisions to select policies. So staff received policy updates from the Virginia School Boards Association, V S B A, in May twenty fourteen, October, October twenty fourteen, and February twenty fifteen. Several policies on this list pertain to student discipline or school safety and were deferred pending this spring during the annual review of JFC Student Code of Conduct by committee. There was one policy deferred from each of the May and October of fourteen updates, and eight deferred from February twenty fifteen. These updates have now been reviewed by staff and are presented this evening on the V S B A Policy Update Checklist and Index Manual, both of them, of which are attached. These policy received first reading at our last meeting on June twenty eighth. May I have a motion to approve second reading of the policies for, from the V S B A?
Submove, Madam Chair.
Motion by Dr. Meyer, second by Mr. Blaine, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, seven zero, thank you. Moving on to item eight point zero four, first reading of a policy, of first reading approval of School Board Policy J E C B, L B, L D B, L D B R, Admission of Non-Public School Students of Part-Time Enrollment. Dr. Mr. Wolf.
Thank you, Madam Chair. In an attempt to service the needs of all children within our county and through a number of parents slash guardian requests for access to curriculum within our division schools for private slash non-public homeschooled students, administration is bringing forth recommended changes to the policies provided to you. In short, these changes will allow a private or non-public homeschooled student to access up to a maximum of two credit-bearing courses per academic year, should they meet the qualifications of the criteria outlined in the attached policies. It is the administration's recommendation that the school board approves the first reading changes to policy J E C B, L B, L B D, and L B D R as presented.
Do we have any questions?
I'll make a motion for...
Oh, comments, okay, sorry, okay, Dr. Meyer, and Ms. Grant, any comments or questions? Ms. Grant.
Mr. Braswell brought up earlier, when we were discussing, do they count towards SOL scores, just as a regular student that was enrolled in the course?
If the course, if they are taking one of the core content areas, and it has an end of course SOL test, yes, ma'am.
Perfect.
How did, how did this come up, that it, have people been asking for this, and we've been saying no, or is there a lot of demand for them, and, and I think in your statement earlier, you said that...
We have had, yes, sir, we, I'm sorry to cut you off, we have had requests from, from parents, not just from this past year, but in years past, in regards to if we are able to provide this as a service.
Well, see as the handicap, if there is any, in approving such a policy.
Well, of course, we would love to have our students to, to be full-time with us, because we firmly believe that there's no better access to, to our curriculum than, than to be in our schools, to be enveloped and embedded in it, but we do know that, that there is a need, that there, we do have members that are in our community that, that can access this as a resource, if we're able to provide that to them, so that's, that's why we're, we're moving ahead with the recommendation on this, sir.
Essentially, as long as we have room, and under the general rules...
Yes, sir, under the guidelines that have been provided, if, if, if they meet the requirements for enrollment, and there is room inside of the course, and we don't have to hire a new teacher, that we could go ahead and accept those students in, thank you. Yes, sir.
May I also share, in relation to that question from Mr. Blaine, I think a couple other points I wanted to, to make. One, all the students in this community, we, we are here to serve, if, if not by initial choice, we are here and want to have policies that are fair and, and, and generate potential access, because we want to serve, that's why we exist, is because of the community. I think that some of the concerns that had come up, we, we had those requests, and we began to examine our policy in relation to surrounding school divisions and throughout the state, and found that ours, from our review, was, was too rigid, and didn't provide for adequate flexibility in accommodating that. To your other point, if there's a handicap, I think you all know that there are certain programs where we already want to expand, because we don't have adequate space, and in some cases, we have courses where class sizes are mandated, and we cannot go above a certain cap. In that case, the, the challenge becomes ensuring that all of our students can access that while also providing, you know, whether space would be available to accommodate someone who is not a, a full-time student.
Madam Chair, I just had a...
And Mr. Braswell, and then, and then Dr. Meyer.
Mr. Wolf, I, I was looking at the, the policy, and it makes, mentioned that these students will not be able to participate in any intercollegiate sports or extracurricular activities.
Yes.
And, and, and so I just wanted to make, make sure that I understood that, but the other thing I wanted to, to get a, an understanding on is, if we offer these part-time credits for these students to take advantage of, what will we receive in terms of funding for the manpower that we're going to...
Those students, those students do count towards average daily membership, so, in essence, two credits allow us to capture point two-five percent of the full percentage.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, and Mr. Wolf, I'm trying to think of what are the detriments, or where could it be leading us down the road as to potential consequences, and while we say that we're not providing transportation, but could you anticipate that down the road a year from now, or two years from now, someone would say, "Well, can't you lease while your bus is passing down the road, and I just live next door, can't you, you know, pick me up and take me to school, I'll, I'll pick up my youngster, you know, at the end of the day?" I'm just trying to think down the road, or, you know, you want to see, is there a Pandora Box that we hit, are we envisioning any potential problems to be able to implement this? We want to be able to serve all the students, and these are students that, not just students, public school students, but these are students of the county.
Certainly. Good evening, members of the board, and Dr. Baker and Dr. Martin. We did think about that exact question, Dr. Meyer, and really, in, in looking at that, there are pieces that it, it isn't just down the road, you've extended the length of the route, and you've also extended how long it ta, it takes to get to the facility, whatever that facility may be, and so there would be ramifications on the current twenty-four, approximately twenty-four thousand students, so it, it isn't simply just, well, we can, we're, we're going down that particular street, as, as you know, so, it, it does have an impact, and so what the school system is trying to do, and for the board's consideration, is allowing these students without having an impact on the current enrolled students, and therefore, allowing that type of a situation would impact the transportation services that are provided to the division students.
Thank you, Ms. Flanard.
One other point for Ms. Flanard, since she's there, what are the advantages for us to open this up for part-time enrollment? What, what would be the distinct advantages for us to do that?
There definitely is a fiscal advantage, I think that that is, to be open and honest and fair to the public, to know that, that there is a fiscal component that we would receive. The other component, I think, is really allowing students to experience public school, and seeing that our services that we do provide is, is of excellent caliber, and so may start to bridge some connections between homeschool students or private school students and public school education. There can be a perceived fear about public school, and so this is a very small and finite way to put your feet into the pool, so to speak, and say, "Okay, wait, you know, I, I actually like this and I enjoy it." The other advantage that, that I do see is that we hear from our homeschool parents, particularly in regards to when students are getting older at the high school level, that certain courses, they're struggling to teach, because they don't necessarily have the confidence in themselves to teach courses like in algebra, or calculus, or what have you, and this allows them to better provide services to their students, and then we all win when we have students that are better educated.
So to sum up what you just said, money and incremental enrollment.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
I think also, we are, a big part of our strategic plan is to engage our community, and we don't say engage our community of students who, and parents who directly access our services, we know that the tax base is made up of a, a number of citizens and, and parents who do not currently access our services, so to be able to, you know, we're... parents who do not currently access our services. So to be able to, you know, we're very proud of the schools and the courses and the opportunities that we can provide and the reason we can provide them is many reasons, but one reason is because of our local support as well. And so we, we, that's part of our plan is to continue to bring students together and prepare them for the future.
Thank you, and I, and I just, I'm sorry, Ms. Grant.
Credit bearing courses. Band, you get credit for, right?
At the high school level, yes.
So this will be, that is something that, I mean, they'll be like any other student, they would have to buy their instrument, but they can participate in band, that is one of my-
And at the middle school level, it, it is your math and your foreign languages that you, you receive credit for. So those are, they, they could do that. So when we say credit bearing, that's where it includes the middle school. So other courses inside of the middle school, you do not get the credit, there's no credit bearing courses there.
Got it, thank you. Dr. Baker?
Would also ask, I, I know that some of the urgency in, in bringing this forth now has to do with the timing of the year and in being ready for the, the start of a new school year. So I would ask the board, we, we're going to need continued time and some patience as we are going to be implementing this for the first time in the county's history. So there are still some other implementation considerations that we're going to be working through even over the next several weeks as you consider the first reading. We may look to enhance even between now and then, based on other information we, we learn about or receive.
Madam Chair, can I, go ahead.
Before, before you make that comment, I just, I wanted to just let other, let the public out there know that this will be, not be taking seats away from the public school, school students, and the students will have to go to their school in whatever school they would be assigned based on where they live. So you can't go to another school if that's not in your, where, where you live, there will be no transfers, this is in your specific school zone. So I wanted to let the public know that as well. Dr. Meyer?
Madam Chair, and I really need to add, ask this question of Dr. Baker, is there any, would it not be advantageous if the board were to suspend the rule, suspend second reading and grant approval? Is there an advantage to the staff because of your need to communicate with the patrons?
I, I think we, we were considering that, but we would like actually to have you consider it for a second reading because of what I had just mentioned. I think if we were at August tenth, knowing that, and we were bringing it forward for the first time, then we would probably try to request that. But I think for now, that time, I think, can be beneficial. It gives you time to consider other questions or enhancements or even recommendations for implementation and we can continue to vet that through our staff. Our, our high school principals are at best vaguely aware of this right now. So it gives us some time to make sure that they're on board and, and also work with our legal on that.
Madam Chair, this is a major change in the way we operate, so I, I ask for a roll call vote on this vote, please.
Okay, we will have, this will be a roll call vote on the first reading of approval of JECB, BDB, LB, LBD, and LBDR. That is a mouthful, Admission of Non Public Students to our, to part-time enrollment. Start with Ms. Grant, please.
Grant, aye.
Blaine, aye.
Braswell, aye.
Shelley, aye.
Blaylock, aye.
Meyer, aye.
Laura?
Seven zero, thank you very much. Okay, moving on to eight point zero five, Approval of Recommended Employee Benefits Broker Consultant, Section 125.
Madam Chair, to the members of the board, good evening. The school division issued a request for proposal of employee benefit broker counseling in Section 125 Administration Services. The procurement was advertised on EVA, Virginia's statewide electronic procurement website, published in the Freelance Star and posted on Spotsbean County Public School purchasing website. The evaluation committee, which consisted of three individuals, individually reviewed and scored each proposal submitted. Once the scoring was complete, the score was sent back to purchasing, where the scores were then compiled and the top scoring proposals were, was identified. Negotiations were then conducted with a top scoring offer. Mark Three was selected as the most qualified offer based on the evaluation factors stated below, which include reduced internal administration, ability to provide requested services, experience with similar projects, and the proposed cost to employees. The RFP Evaluation Committee is recommending contract award to Mark Three for a period of one year with four-year annual renewal options for your consideration.
Motion by Ms. Grant?
I'll second that.
Second by Mr. Blaine. Any discussion or questions? Mr. Braswell?
My question pertains to your evaluative criteria, and I noticed that the proposed cost of employees were weighted at the least in comparison to experience. Why?
One of the things that we look at in terms of the programs and offerings to our employees is, one, we want to make sure that it is comparable to what they are accustomed to. Certainly as the evaluation committee looked at the costs, that did have a huge factor in the decisions that we made in making a comparison between the proposals that were there. But ultimately, we are most concerned about the service as well as making sure that it's cost efficient for the employees.
And, and I think all those things are important. My question or my concern is, is why was the cost to the employee rated so low in comparison? We're not talking about, you know, twenty percent, you know, twenty points versus twenty-five, we're talking forty-five points versus ten. That, that's, so I was trying to listen in your answer to hear if there was something that was so salient that you would say, you know what, cost is really not a factor. Is, is there not a, a big difference in, in, in cost between carriers anyway, or was, what, what was the, the reason?
I think when you really look at the service itself, the services were fairly comparable.
Okay.
The cost was a huge factor in our consideration when you look at those services in comparison to what was going to benefit the employees comprehensively. Does that make sense?
I, I, from what I'm hearing you're saying is that it, when, when you factored everything in, there wasn't a big variance in cost, that, that as a result of that, you, you went, you, you felt that, I guess, time in the business and their ability to have proven administration over that meant more.
When I'm looking at the forty-five that you referenced, that speaks specifically to the benefit and the services. When you look at the proposals, the services were very similar. In terms of the cost aspect of it, that was a huge considering factor as well. When you're talking about these kinds of voluntary benefits, a lot of them are very similar in the offerings. I'm still not sure if I'm fully answering your question, but really we see those components going hand in hand when you look at the total picture for the employees and how it benefits them.
I think Ms. Grant was to jump in.
I just think that if you explain it this way, if they provided all the services that we needed, the cost was proportionate to the services provided. So the cheaper ones would have scored higher on cost, but they'd much lower on services, because if they were more affordable, they did not do what we needed them to do. So for the companies that actually did what, what, to fulfill the forty-five points, they would have been more expensive because they were doing more.
Or not as inclusive.
There was not a company that included all the services but was also the cheapest.
Right.
That did not exist.
Okay, so it, it, so it also pertained to how inclusive those services were as well? Okay.
It wasn't just based on the years of experience in the business, if I'm looking at what I think you're looking at. It was more so looking at the benefits comprehensively of what's being offered in those services collectively.
Got it.
Okay.
Any more comments or questions? Okay, I will call for the, for the vote. All those in favor of approval of recommendation employee benefits, say aye please.
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed, seven zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to items nine point oh one and nine point oh two, informational items, all usual and customary. Okay, moving on to item ten point zero one, any unfinished business. Ten point oh zero two, new business.
Yes, ma'am. This is strictly board related. I wanted to talk about board communication, I had shared some with you, and just as we meet at our workshops, we have legislative priorities. And, and I have been seeing some areas where some of us are advocating for things I'm not necessarily against, but they're not in the legislative priorities. So I think at the next workshop, we need to talk about better ways to communicate, because if we're going to take something outside our priorities, which we all have committed to that, so regardless of where I am, I'm going to advocate for those. I don't need to ask y'all's permission because we already did that. Because we move as a group when we're going to places like Richmond or DC, I want us to be more cohesive when we do that. So I was thinking at the next workshop, putting on the agenda to talk about ways if we want to add to our legislative priorities and put another list on it. And maybe that needs to become more of a fluid document. Maybe it's something that we could change. Maybe tomorrow, we, one of us pops up and says, hey, this is something I think we should all be fighting for. And at the workshop is the, really the only time, because the school board is held to many restrictions, we can't just have this conversation candidly. So that's why I'm doing it openly, certainly not to call anybody out, just to say it's an area I think we could improve on. And that's all of us, not just one of us. So any thoughts on that? Does anybody agree that we should tighten that up a little bit and maybe work on, maybe making that document something that's changeable and we could add to it?
I, I concur. I concur with you, Ms. Blaylock, and I think that we need to take full advantage of continuing education for the board so that we don't fall into any pitfalls in terms of, you know, that type of thing where we're dealing with communication or misrepresenting the board to the public. But also because we have election looming, there's going to be new board members and that would be a, a great opportunity also to introduce to them as well what's expected in terms of representing the board.
And at the next, actually, actually our next workshop, one of the things on our agenda is our legislative priorities. So that would be a good time to, to say, to, to discuss all of it and for the, those legislative priorities. So that's a good, that's, it would be a good time, because it's one of our plans as well for the next board meeting, workshop, which is in September, this before the second meeting of September. Okay, any, any more unfinished or new, or new business? Okay, moving on to eleven point oh one, Personnel Matters. July thirteenth, twenty fifteen, resolved that the board conduct a closed meeting for the following purpose, consideration of candidates for employment, assignment, promotion, demotion, and discipline of employees, or resignation of employees who have a contractual commitment to the board as permitted by two point two, three, seven, eleven, A1 of the Code of Virginia. May I have a motion to go into closed, closed meeting?
Close session.
Ms. Grant, and a second by Mr. Blaine. All those in favor of going into closed session?
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed, we are in closed session, seven zero. Thank you. as were identified in the motion by which the closed meeting was convened was heard, discussed, or considered in the meeting. We're going to, may I have a motion to certify?
Make a motion that we certify, closed meeting.
Mr. Braswell, second?
I'll second.
Second by Mrs. Blaylock. Roll call vote, starting with Ms. Grant, please.
Blaine, aye.
Braswell, aye.
Shelley, aye.
Blaylock, aye.
Meyer, aye.
Laura, aye.
Seven zero. And then, Dr. Martin, would you please read the items from the closed meeting?
Motion is that the school board accepts the recommendations of the superintendent for personnel appointments, assignments, transfers, resignations, and retirements as presented in closed meeting and permitted by Section two point two, dash thirty-seven eleven, eleven, A1 of the Code of Virginia.
So moved, Madam Chair.
Dr. Meyer, second by Ms. Grant. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed?
Go ahead.
Go ahead. And second by Mr. Laura, all those in favor of adjournment?
Aye.
Aye. Seven zero, eight twenty-two.
Thanks to our police protection this evening.